Okay, let's go ahead and call the Johnson City Council Work Session number 23-02 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have one item on the agenda this evening for discussion, and that is a review and discuss the proposed FY '24 budget. Teresa.
I guess Mike and I didn't talk about it, but Mike, are you taking the lead, I assume? And then you can have me pull up things as we go, and I can explain them.
Teresa, I can't hear you.
If I talk into closer, is that better?
That's better.
Okay. I think Mike's gonna take the lead. I guess he and I didn't necessarily talk about that.
We didn't, we didn't talk about.
Do you want me to do that?
I can do.
I can, I can pull up our memo.
I can.
I'll pull up our memo that we sent out. Cindy? I need to do something.
And I can certainly start talking. You know, as we prepared, I mean, first of all, what I would say as we prepared this fiscal year budget, I really want to say thank you to the staff for the work they've put into it, in particular Teresa and all the department directors, but even their staff. It really does take a lot of work. Staff take the budgeting process very seriously. And the other component, I would say, is what I really recognized is you have a really good staff that's very conservative in their budgeting approach and how they use public funds. And so I think the council should be really grateful, and the public should be grateful for, I think, the good job they do and being good stewards of taxpayer funds. So it did take some work. Overall, what I would say in a nutshell, this does represent a seven cent increase over fiscal year 2023's levy rate. So we know that's never an easy thing for councils to swallow or accept, but we believe in the recommendation I'm making that it's needed for a number of reasons, both staff increases, wages, and number of personnel that we need, and additionally, just inflationary pressures we're feeling, we're all feeling. But I think that's, it's also especially acute in the governmental arena. I mean, if you look, there was some information, I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit, so I may just jump ahead a little bit. But if there was some information I did include in the memo, just talking about inflationary impacts, you know, we know the CPI last year was 7.5% from November of 2021, for the 12 months prior. Well, this November was 6.1%. So inflation continues to run high, but it's also especially acute in really the areas that the cities, what we municipalities purchase products in. So when you look at the missile cost index, this is a index that's put together that really looks at what governmental units, cities in particular, products they buy, and try to look at wages, cost of material, concrete, and whatnot. You know, it was 11.49% last year, 7.21%. So it's exceeding consumer index. But even if you look at the Iowa DOT, the last five years, I mean, there was a 45.1% increase in 2018, 22.6%. It actually declined by 3.9%. 2021 was a good year at 2.9%, but now it's, this fiscal year ran 23.5%. So accumulatively, I mean, huge increases, nearly 100% increase over a five-year period. So, you know, I think overall, when you look at the increase that we're proposing, I think it's really in line to the inflationary impacts that we're seeing out there. The department proposals that you see, the city of Johnston has had a precedence of over the last 12 fiscal years to do a, really a baseline budgeting. That practice was continued this fiscal year with decision packages being presented, and we'll talk through those here shortly. We also included a two-year budget, so it looked both at fiscal year 2024 and 2025, and, you know, trying to anticipate impacts down the road, you know, added inflationary increase for staffing, and really trying to understand those out-year concerns that we may have. The capital improvement program, which I think is on your main agenda for today for consideration, you know, there's a number of areas that we address in the CIP, those general governmental items, all the way up to parks and leisure items. So I think it is a, it's fair representation. If you really look at the list of items just for the next fiscal year, it's frankly impressive, I think, for a lot of communities to, in Iowa, for what we're taking on. And so I think it's very aggressive, but also recognizes what our citizens and the growth that we're facing in Johnston that we have. Any questions on the CIP and the items that are in that? Employment costs, I mean, as you know, we are including a 6% in the baseline budget, and that really is based on some of the union negotiations we've had to date. Now, in the decision packages, we are recommending six new full-time positions, police officer, two firefighters, a neighborhood inspector, a maintenance one worker in the water, wastewater, and a maintenance one worker in public works. Additionally, we're recommending a part-time administrative assistant. So it is a number of positions being added, but I think it does recognize the growth that we are facing and really the staffing challenges that we have as a community to address that growth that we're seeing. We have reached a tentative agreement with Teamsters, that's our police department bargaining group, at a 6% increase each year for over the next three years. Year one roughly is about 7% increase, and then 6% for the following two years. We continue to negotiate with Ask Me and the firefighter union, so those are ongoing, and we haven't had any set decision. The budget does include, just like we have in the past, a pool for the non-union, so we include a 6% wage increase for the non-union, along with a $25,000 pool for non-union. That is in the base budget. Any questions on that at this point? Health insurance, in a nutshell, we're recommending continuing the self-insured. Now, we will receive final rates as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, but at this point, we're not recommending any plan design change. We do know that overall, we believe, talking with our broker, we'll see an increase somewhere in the sub-10% increase. So that's what our budget assumption is, is 10% increase. Now, we do know that while that's higher, it really is just kind of the trend that we're seeing, and frankly, it's also a little bit of what is being seen in the market in health insurance. Any questions there?
So there's a cost, the cost increase, do we have a dollar figure on what that is? Or how does that work as far as kind of factoring that into the budget?
In a dollar amount? Well, that would have been factored in the base budget within each department. I mean, that's how we've done it in the past.
So did the departments just eat that cost then, or?
No, so the base budget, that's one line item that they can then increase within their base budget.
And I guess, I think at some point, it would be helpful as we, you know, sort of think about and kind of communicate to folks about, you know, here's why we're where we are, being able to say, obviously, you know, 6% on the wage side is a cost driver. It'd be helpful to maybe be able to say, you know, our health insurance costs went up 10%, which equates to $600,000 or $700,000. So if there's an ability to do, they don't need that for tonight, but.
Sure. Sure, we can do that. Just know that the percentage is the, it's 20% for the employee share, 10%. 20% for an employee's family share, 10% for single. That still stays the same.
Right.
But I know what you're asking is what, what our cost is.
The employee is paying some of that, but we're paying.
Right.
Nope, that's, that sounds reasonable. Any other questions on health insurance? Ipers, I mean, that continues. There were no changes for the upcoming fiscal year in that. General fund reserve, we do, is following past practices. We do set a minimum of 25% of our annual general operating in reserve. This budget continues to do that. So our actual reserve on June 30th, 2022, was $6.44 million, which is approximately 43% of our general fund operating budget. So as we put together the budget, you know, we're recognizing that there's a reserve, and then, you know, we're spending that down. So we anticipate that at the end of fiscal year 2024, that we'll be at that 25%. Now, historically, going back, you know, I've spent some time going back, looking at past audits, you know, we've consistently had a reserve, and that's consistently our budget pattern, that we do plan to spend those down. Now, I will tell you, it does appear that our reserves are getting tighter. So it's something we have to be conscious of, that we may not have that pool of reserves in the future like we do now, but we'll be mindful and watch that as we go forward. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I do have a question on that. We don't have a mandate within the city that says we have to have a general reserve of 25%. Is that correct?
In our, in our finance policy, we do have a statement that says that we will have, I didn't bring that with me, but it does say that we'll maintain 25% balance. Oh, I need to look up the wording as best we can, or something like that. We have to explain every year to our rating agencies why we continue to eat at our balance. And my statement every year is that it's council's policy to get to the 25% because each year our audit number is higher than that, and to get there, that you have been consciously spending down the reserve, that it isn't, that you're spending it bully-nilly, I guess, that you're making that decision knowing that you're making that decision. And so they appreciate that, and they always appreciate me telling them that, and they always say that in our statement or our rating as to that, so.
So my, I guess my comment here is, and I don't remember which city council member brought it up, perhaps it was Councilman Cope, about the conservative nature of the way we've been doing our budgets, which Mike has already started off with by saying that staff has been very conscientious on their preparing their budget and being as conservative as possible because we don't know what will happen, and we're trying to create that cushion so that we, we don't have to go to extraordinary means to cover if something were to happen. With that being said, and I know this affects our bond rating, but $6 million in reserve is quite a bit of money. I noticed that the 7%, getting to the 7% increase of our tax levy, that equates to what? At 16,500 times seven, we're looking at $100,000. I mean, I'm just wondering if we could get down to a zero change.
The reason, for one, the one reason we stay at 25%, of course, is that we don't get any tax money the first three months of the year. So by the end of September, we have spent our general fund down to a certain level, of course, that then can make some people nervous, maybe not others. But part of the reason our general fund reserve is at that higher number overall, our overall general fund reserve, is because of the balance that we keep in our equipment reserve fund, which isn't, is not set up by resolution, by policy of this council to be spent on anything but equipment. So I can't pay general fund expenses out of that fund without some sort of change from the council, and I wouldn't recommend that we do that. So part of that $6 million balance is a million plus, is a million one, a million one eighty-six of that $7 million balance that we're talking about. So the general fund operating budget, which is, I've just put up the balances on the screen here, the general fund operating balance is 4.8 million. And that's the 25% that I focus on as to oppose, as opposed to maybe the 34% number that you focus on at the very bottom, where there's a $7 million balance. So I'm just explaining to you why I do that.
A hundred percent, and I don't want to off-track what Mike is doing. I, you answered my question, and I may want to come back to this later. Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
I would say this, because I think that it would be helpful if there was a more robust distribution of that, some of that information about the tracking of the balance. So I think you make a great point that, you know, July 1, the fiscal year starts, but we don't receive revenue until September 1. So if the general fund reserve is 25% on July 1, how far does it get down until you get to September 1?
Yep.
And that's information that I think would be, I would, I will say that I'm comfortable with a 25% reserve, but I also think that as we, as we think about into the future budget years, and we look to kind of figure out ways to be as responsible as we can, we may want to rethink that a little bit. But based on good data, right? And you're saying there is data out there, but I, it's not been shared with us about what, how that balance acts over time. All we see is kind of these end numbers, which is, we budget for 25%, and we, we're going to end up with 40, we had 43% in the fiscal year that ended last year, and the fiscal year that's going to end June 30, we're going to have 32%. It just, it's pretty much kind of like clockwork now. And so I think there's a good question to be asked. Do we need to keep it at 25%? Now, I'm very comfortable with keeping it 25% in the budget we have for this year, but I think next, as we look at putting a budget together next year, if we're in kind of a similar situation, maybe it makes sense to look at a 23% reserve, or some sort of step down in that process. If we can look at that balance and know that we're not going to bottom out and get into a negative position by September 1, but I, without knowing what that looks like, that is a, you know, but I think it's, that's information that needs to be shared more widely than it currently is, because to me, a policy of 25% without knowing the full impact is, I think, a policy that needs a little bit more thought.
And I guess what I can do, because I give you that number every month in the monthly financials that I give you, but I can add a sentence that tells you every month what that balance is at that time. Because every month, you get the treasurer's report, and every month, you know what the balance at the end of the month is for the general fund.
And I think that we just need to spend a little bit more time on it. That's a piece of information that gets shared to us, but there's not a lot of discussion or thought on it. But I just, I do think that, you know, we need to have a little bit more discussion around it.
We're happy to put that together. What I would say, I think Councilmember Martin really hit it on the head, though, too, and I think we probably would want to bring Matt Stupel in from PFM, because the bond rating agencies, they're really going to look at what your policies say, how you're implementing those policies, and you're going to hear from the bond agencies. They want 25% as that floor. Frankly, as we're ending at a higher percentage, our bond rating is reflecting that we're, we have more reserves than what their minimums are. So I think what, what you would hear from Matt, I don't want to speak for him, is if we draw that down too far, we're going to pay for it in the back end on higher debt costs.
And that's all, that's all good part of that.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, kind of asking the questions and, you know, probing a little bit and figuring out what all the options are.
And part of, part of the concern I have, which I never know, quite honestly, how to necessarily share all that information with you folks, but, you know, as you know, we're now in our second year of our five-year decrease of rollback. We're not going to get that money anymore. So within five years, we'll have a lot.
Not the rollback, the backfill.
Backfill, excuse me. Within five years, we'll have lost over a half a million dollars of backfill money we were getting from the state. That makes me nervous. That makes me not want you to get much further down in percentages and reserves. There were unintended consequences with the regulation, the legislation that was passed last year regarding the first $150,000 worth of value for any commercial industry. Am I saying that right, Adam? Am I saying that right about, it's the first $150,000 worth of a commercial valuation is now rolled back like residential?
Yes.
Okay. So it's like rolled back like residential property and getting taxed? So according to the amount of money I already received this first pay, we received almost $240,000. The projection I'll get next year for the whole year is $120,000. That's in all funds, general debt, TIF, and other areas. So when I have these outside forces that are changing, you already know that I'm very conservative anyway, but when I have these outside forces pushing on us, I've, I've said before, and I, and I don't need to say it every time, but I just get so afraid that I'm going to have to tell you guys sometime, that's absolutely not doable. Whereas right now, for the most part, I've been able to tell you, okay, I think I have a way I can figure that out. And I just, I just fear the day that I have to say to you, we can't do that. So that's why I get a little, even Mike and I may not agree on certain things, the way he's proposing things. He and I've had those discussions. We can agree to disagree, and he's your city administrator. I have been, I have, I've been around so long, I know I'm very conservative. So I understand your point. I hope you understand mine, and we can move on.
I absolutely understand your point. And actually, this question actually came from a constituent.
Yeah.
And the explanation about the ripple effects to our, you know, saving, pulling this down, maybe we're going to bottom out in three months, pulling this down affects our bond rating, therefore, we're going to spend, we're going to pay more for the money we need to borrow. All that is part of the story. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, we have used it in instances where we've had emergency situations.
Right. Right. And I always think of the $900,000 we had to use in the sewer that wiped out the person's backyard.
Exactly. Exactly. We needed the money tomorrow.
Needed a million dollars right now, and then we had to go back and bond for it and all that stuff, and it was a rain event that washed out Kings, I don't know, Kingston, King Row, or something like that. Someone's backyard was gone. So, yeah.
Teresa, before, and Mike, I apologize, before we move on too much further, though, you did mention that there's a million-plus kind of capital reserve or equipment reserve that you do. Is that interest-bearing for us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
And that interest goes general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Following all the memo, it does say go to Exhibit B, decision packages, but we're going to pause on that, because I'm going to, I'm going to finish this first memo up, and then we'll go to the decision path, which is how that works. The capital equipment program, we talked, Teresa talked a little bit about that. Really, that's a program that allows us to kind of look at the major capital items and really plan out. So we're doing it on a planned basis to understand what the life cycles is, so we're not piling up all the equipment in one year. So it's a good tool that the city of Johnston has. Road use tax, after the census, it's kind of settling down a little bit. It does, you know, the DOT does forecast it is going to increase in fiscal year 2024, but we do always take, and I think most cities in Iowa do, take a conservative approach, because that can be a very volatile tax source, but we're budgeting just over $3 million for the upcoming fiscal year. Hotel motel does seem that it is recovering post-COVID. We continue to provide two sevenths, or two cents, the seven cents to Des Moines Convention and Visitors Bureau, additionally, two of the seven cents to Bravo, and then the remaining is funded to the Johnston Economic Development Corporation, Johnston Chamber of Commerce, Great Des Moines Partnership, and then some additionally, some park revenues. So we're anticipating $350,000 roughly in hotel motel.
Mike, is the 3.48, is that the four seven cents?
Correct. Local option sales tax, as you're aware, Johnson implemented this in August of 2019. We are continuing to use that. Now, last year, the council made a few decisions on how to expend those funds on really ongoing expenses. Because of that decision, we're recommending that on an ongoing basis, that we'll continue to expend those on those specific ongoing expenses. We will have an ongoing balance, and so really what we're going to target is one-time expenses out of local option sales tax as we draw that reserve down to a budgeted amount. Now, this is one of the points that Teresa and I agreed to disagree on, I mean, a little bit more, I guess, moving towards some of the expenses and spending it, and spending more of the lost dollars. We did receive from the Department of Revenue an estimate of $3.9 million, I believe. What was your original estimate, 3.2? But, you know, what Department of Revenue does when they gave us that estimate, they, that's 95% of what they're estimating. So, I mean, they have a cushion in there already. The other thing I'm proposing is that we do a one-time set aside of 3% of local option sales taxes and keep that as a reserve. I went back and looked at data, Polk County retail sales for the last, since like 1970, and we've seen year after year growth in Polk County, with the exception of eight years. Seven of those have been less than 1%. One of those was actually a two and a half percent decline year over year. So Polk County has a pretty good track record of retail sales. So what I recommend is we put a 3%, kind of cushion us for worst-case scenario, looking at history. So that's a line item that you'll see in there, and if the council is agreeable to that, we'll set that aside in a budget amendment. But then you can see, scroll down a little bit on the bottom of the chart, you can see that we're then carrying over those ongoing expenses year after year, and that we're planning to do a little bit larger increase based on the sales tax receipts. Now, I'm estimating a 1% increase. Historically, that's averaged about 1.8%. So I think we're still being conservative in that regard. And then additionally, now, if you scroll back up, you'll see in fiscal year 2024, a number of one-time expenditures that we're, we're planning. That includes master trail plan, street scape.
Paramedic school expenses, paramedic school expenses.
Storms, fire, yeah. Throughout the community, police document management system, and then aquatic sustainability study. And I.
Document that was distributed in the council.
There was two. There was a D1 and a D2. This one was D1. D1. I hope. I hope I didn't attach the same one twice.
No.
Okay.
D2 would be the one that you've historically have seen. That's the reconciliation that Teresa does. The D1 is something I've used in the past, and just kind of line items.
No, I was just, it was confusing, because the one document didn't have the master plan, the master trails plan, and so, but what this one does. But basically, you're spending, are you, the difference between D1 and D2, you've got like the master trails plan. I'm just trying to figure out. So when the referendum, 50% required for tax relief, is that all going into the debt service?
Yes.
But like on the, on the other document, it shows the debt service funds, property tax relief, like for '23, '24, 2.5.
And that's these two. He's, he's, Mike, maybe you want to explain how you've done 50 and extra in these two lines? He's, he's, Mike, maybe you want to explain how you've done 50 and extra in these two lines?
I wanted to really highlight that, you know, what the, what the referendum required us to do and then the decisions that the city's made to actually add additional money towards debt service. So really just trying to highlight though, I mean, we can combine it, but I think it's more transparent that way.
I'm just trying to reconcile the two docs.
Right.
Okay.
Well, my, my 2.5 equals his 1,968,654 plus 605,630 on his document. The first two numbers under expenses.
And then we also have the, down at the bottom, the 1,600,000 for the decrease of levy.
Yes. And that's just, just like last year, we needed additional money to lower the levy to what you requested. And it's just going into the general fund.
So, I mean, really, we're spending 3.5 million.
Lower the levy, but you're only using 2.5 to off-serve your debt, to offset your debt payment. So on the bottom of mine, or the other one, you'll see that, hopefully my numbers are still right. But I had tried to put in here that like so for debt in FY23, for debt, you were saving, you were taking $1.34 off the debt service levy, the very bottom of the page. You took $1.34 off the debt service levy. And then you took an additional 87.6 off the regular levy for a total savings of lost money off the debt levy of $2.22.261.
That's on this document.
It's on the bottom of the D2 one.
I guess I'm just trying to reconcile the D1 and D2. For instance, on whatever document I have, D2 I have in my hand, it shows we spent $191,628 for general fund decision package for FIRE last year. And I don't see that amount in this D1 document. Where would I find that amount in this D1 document? Because as my understanding is, that will continue to be funded out of local option sales tax.
So I need to add them up, but these, the expenditures of $53,250 down to 927,581.
Which document are you looking at?
At the, at the, the one where you said you couldn't find. So like over here where if you added up the 191 through the 832, I don't know if someone can, behind me can do that quickly. Sarah's doing it. Thank you, Sarah. And then on D2, that's my hope when Sarah adds this up for me, that the 53,250 through 927,581 are the same totals. It was just that at one point, I was asked to separate between the ones that you saw on the other page, which ones were ongoing and which were one-time. So the numbers don't exactly match because part of what was in the public safety's decision packages were one-time and some were ongoing. So I had to separate things.
Yeah, but you, you understand.
I, I know what you're saying.
It's just me who's confused, but when we have.
The totals, the safety.
Transfer general fund to decrease levy of 1,600,000 in one document. And in another document, it's 1,458. It's, it, to me, the two documents are really confused. It's hard to kind of flesh it out. And maybe it's just me.
Okay.
But I, again, I'm not, I'm not, I just think we have to, before we're ready for prime time, I think these two documents, it'd be nice to one, get down to just one document instead of two.
Well, and I don't care which one, we can use this one that Mike did for us here. And I'll just double check my numbers and make sure that all of my numbers are, are trans, are transposed over to his numbers.
I mean, there's lots of things I like about the D1 document as opposed to the D, because the D2 document does not include all of the one-time master trails, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a.
Yeah, and I just hadn't put those in yet because you haven't approved them. So I just hadn't done them, updated the reconciliation for the budget.
Just figuring out the, getting it to where it matches up would be.
Okay, we'll do that. True. I think the, the takeaways from this document, from I think Mike and my standpoint, for the most part, is that you know what we're doing for debt, which are the top two lines on his D1 form. And, and that we're continuing to, or that Mike is recommending that this amount down below, whether it's 129,3, this, this amount right here, which equals the overall ongoing transfer to the general fund, his last line, that he's recommending that amount be 1,419,040 in this upcoming budget versus last year, which would have been 1,285,704. So that should have been the difference between the two. And that, that last line, you know, that's what he's, that's the policy or the direction he took to the finance committee.
The 1.2 number, where did you get that?
If, looking at D1, and if you look up at the screen up here, I have it. The very bottom line that says, overall ongoing transfer to the general fund. In the FY22, 23, this year, he's saying that overall ongoing transfer amount was 1,285,704, not including the debt. That's the number that's down here at the bottom. That's this 129,38, 184,5 and 927. So what he's recommending is that every year, that amount of money gets transferred into the general fund for, from lost. And that this 927 goes up, is it 1% Mike? Did you have it going up 1%? That it goes up 1% that bottom number. And that every year, that's the amount that's going to be going in. And we don't have to necessarily discuss, discuss ongoing transfers for lost, but more importantly, just the one-time transfers for lost.
So as I look at this D1 document, so the transfer to general fund to decrease the levy goes from 927,000 to 1,600,000. What's driving that increase?
Say that again now.
I'm looking at D1.
Yep.
Transfer to general fund to decrease the levy. So the budget, the current budget year we're in right now, that last sign says 927,581.
Turn back to D2.
D1, I'm on D1.
So this form here?
This document. So transfer to general fund to decrease levy. So it's 927,581.
Yes, okay.
And the next year, it's, the year we're budgeting it, it's 1,600,000.
Yep.
What's driving that increase?
It's just, again, it's the additional dollars we're getting. So in the end, other than the decision packages that we're spending on one-time costs, this document, we were trying to keep the reserve flat. So any additional increases that we get in local option sales tax, we're going to roll it right into trying to lower the overall levy rate. So.
So this would in theory lower the levy rate an additional 10 cents or some of our 4 cents.
Probably a penny or two, yeah.
Uh, uh, above what we did in the current budget.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It would just be helpful, again, just to sort of make sure we've got all those things. I guess the only other thing I, I think about is that I think we, I, I, I think obviously the objective of keeping the debt service levy at $2.33 is a really good objective. But my concern is we continue, it's obviously continuing to cost us more and more to do that. And so more and more of our local option sales tax money is going into capital projects, which in essence, it gives us an ability to kind of not have a lot of, as much discipline on the capital projects as we probably should have. And so I just, the challenge with that is at some point we'll run out of local option sales tax money. Cause I presume you're kind of, you're, you're working, we're, we're putting a lot of this towards reducing the levy, but we're able to use kind of an ending balance to do that. But at some point we'll run out of that money. So I, I think, again, this is not an issue for this budget cycle. But I think as we look to the next budget cycle, I think, I think we still have to go back to that CIP and maybe tighten it a little bit. Because we're kind of getting away with, well, we can afford it because we have, we're putting all this lost money into it. And I, and I, and I'm not sure we can afford. I think we're, there's some challenges or we may need to tighten that up. Now, the hard part is all those projects are valuable and important. It will not be a fun discussion and we may not in the end even figure out anything to cut out of it. But I do think it's just something we have to.
It's a good discussion to have. So continuing on.
And then I guess, Mike, just, it would be helpful, I would appreciate if, on that D1 document, if the difference, whatever that levy impact is, so the 1,600,000, if you could say that's reducing the levy by, you know, whatever the amount is, similar to what you, it would be helpful just to be able to kind of convert that into the impact on the levy.
We can do that. Um, moving on, if there's any other questions on lost, requests from outside organizations, community education, that's a contractual increase following the 2080. So that was included in the base budget. Greater Des Moines Partnership, Johnston Chamber of Commerce have both asked for increases. So that's a decision we need direction from on the, from the city council from at this point. This would come out of hotel motel funds for both of those. And then we continue to fund JEDCO and the partnership for healthy communities at the same levels as FY24. Any questions on that? Any direction council wants to give on those?
Well, Mike, talk to us a little bit about the chamber as well as the Des Moines Partnership. They've been, they've come to us several years in a row now asking for a slight increase. And we've declined it for some time now.
So I know the Des Moines Partnership, I don't recall the number off the top of my head. I think it was 6,300 is what we did in fiscal year 2023. We did approve, excuse me, fiscal year 2022. We did approve a small increase to 7,500 fiscal year 23. So they've, they did ask to be taken up to 10,000 in fiscal year 23, and we only did 7,500. The chamber did ask for an increase from 8 to 10,000 in fiscal year 2023. We maintained them at the same level. I do know their expenses, in particular with green days, are, are going up and they're, they're, I know it's, it's an event that they're proud of, but they're struggling with just.
We're very supportive of.
Yeah.
Kind of an identity of our community having, having green days. So what would be the impact if we were to boost both of those up to the 10,000?
I, I mean, it would be additional dollars that would come out of hotel motel. So it'd be, you know, which we drive into parks. So it'd just be some things we'd have to shuffle within the parks and capital items we would, we'd purchase ultimately. But it, it's something that if the council wants to make that decision, you know, we can make it work.
Well, I think we need to at least explore it.
Well, it's part of their staff recommendation.
So as you get down later in the memo, we talk about that.
But I think it would be helpful then to sort of see for that hotel motel budget, if we, what the, I mean, this is how the money flows. And so that sheet of the budget, okay, if we go from 8,000 and 7,500 to 10,000, you know, what, is that just a, is that, the ending balance is a little bit lower in that fund? Or what are the ramifications? I, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation and don't have a problem with it. But I just kind of want to make sure I know the full ramifications of it. And I don't.
And, and that was, that was what was driving my questions.
Yeah, okay.
Mike asked for direction. I gave him some comments and I, I wanted to know, understand what the impact is.
Yeah, you're right. Good. We're on the same page. That's good.
We can put that information together and get the council. So I'm going to kind of deviate at this point and go to exhibit B. And we're going to start talking about the decision packages. You know, I know these, you know, the decision packages, you know, are weighed between ongoing and one-time expenses. And I did kind of change the format a little bit. So I do apologize if, if you don't like the format, we certainly can go back to the old format. But, but overall, I think some of the discussions we had, especially at the HR Finance Committee, was in particular with the franchise fee. And so a lot of this, we'll back up. Without funding any of the decision packages, the budget that's put together, there is approximately $454,000 that could be used out of the current budget without raising the levy to fund decision packages. We did talk through, and I think, you know, the needs are greater than that. So looking at franchise fees as one option. We did have conversations with Mid-American Energy. Implementing a 1% franchise fee would generate approximately $334,000. Now, once you implement a franchise fee on the utility bill only, the local option sales tax comes off. You still pay local option sales tax at all, the local retailers, restaurants. But just on the, on the utility bill itself, you would no longer pay a 1% franchise fee. So there would be a little bit of loss with the local option sales tax. But, but overall, we would, it would be a net positive for the City of Johnston to do that. So we're recommending that we implement that so we can fund the decision packages that we're, we're presenting to council. And I will start running through those at this point. And these are my recommendations in a priority list of, of where I feel they should be prioritized before the council. First priority would be to fund a full-time police officer. The second priority would be to fund essentially two full-time firefighters. Now, the idea is we'd actually had three full-time firefighters with Grimes funding one of those positions. And that allows us then to have that rotational duty of one body across all the shifts. The third priority would be the neighborhood inspector. And that really comes out of the strategic planning and also the community survey identifying that as a need. The fourth priority, and this is a little bit of a shift from what was discussed during earlier department presentations, but to add a park superintendent. And we currently have a crew leader position that's vacant. Our proposal would be to move that existing crew leader down to just a maintenance worker level and then promote one of the existing crew leaders, we had two crew leader positions, to this park superintendent position. And that at least would be what we're going to propose for the short term. So on, unlike the original proposal where we'd add a whole new body, we're just going to kind of shift the leadership change. This ends up being a cost neutral change. The fifth priority would be to fund in-car camera system replacement. And that's $32,448. That would be an annual cost. It's a five-year contract, so it's an ongoing expense. So that's why it shows up as a levy increase. The sixth priority would be to add a maintenance worker in the water, wastewater division. And that would be paid out of the utility, so no impact to the, to the tax levy. The seventh priority would be to add a maintenance worker within the public works division. Again, that would come out of road use tax, so no impact to the overall tax. Again, that would come out of road use tax, uh, so no impact to the overall tax levy itself. The, um, eighth priority would be to, uh, add a part-time administrative, excuse me, would be to add part-time wages within the library. Uh, we have a number of positions that are, uh, well below $15 an hour. And as we know, in the current job environment, uh, we're just not effectively, we're not keeping staff. Uh, we're seeing turnover, which then is impacting the delivery of our services within the library department. Uh, we still would have a few positions, even with this change, that would be below $15 an hour. But, uh, the vast majority would then be over at least $15 an hour. The ninth priority would be to add a, a part-time administrative assistant to the police department. You know, I, I think as the police department explained, you know, the FOIA requests and other demands, um, are really just becoming very burdensome to the police department. Uh, and without this, you know, in the probably short term, we're going to be looking at, uh, the need to actually probably close the walk-up window some hours, uh, which I think, you know, impacts the delivery of our services. So, uh, it's an important add for, uh, the police department. The 10th priority would be the, um, Parks Master Trails Plan, um, funding. Uh, the 11th priority would be with an administration and our, um, employee enrollment for benefits. Um, you know, part of this is, uh, one-time expenses. We're proposing to take that out of local option sales tax, but then the ongoing expenses would come out of the general levy. Uh, and really just within a number of employees we have, and I can attest, I had a small error in my enrollment recently here. Um, it's just, it's, it's just a mistype key, uh, no one's fault. But I think it just helps streamline, uh, some of that benefit enrollment. Um, the 12th priority would be the streetscape master plan. Um, that's been a council priority to, to work on that. 13th priority would be to send two paramedics or two EMTs to paramedic school. As with all the new staffing we've had in the fire department, uh, that's really important just for staff, uh, staffing needs and, and to have more flexibility as we schedule staff. And by the way, if I'm going too fast or you have questions, please jump in. Um, the 14th priority would be to make upgrades both in software and technology, physical technology to the storm sirens. Um, that would be coming out of local option sales tax, uh, 24,750. Uh, we actually send staff out and annually spend about $8,000 to, uh, view those. So there is a good return on investment, uh, by doing that, uh, in the long term. Uh, the 15th priority is the document management system in the police department. Um, now this has broke up both, um, on a local option sales tax that's non, well, one-time expense. And then the ongoing, um, would come out of the general levy. Um, in public works, the, uh, the 16th priority would be to add an automatic transfer state, uh, switch, uh, to the generator to allow that to automatically switch over when there's a power generation or power failure. Uh, that allows then staff doesn't have to come in. We have continuity of our services down in the public works. Uh, the 17th priority is to pave the public works parking lot. Um, that, uh, like the transfer switch comes out of road use tax, so not an impact to the overall general levy itself. Uh, but that would allow us to be good neighbors and also to, uh, help us, um, uh, well, to allow us to meet city code requirements that we're currently not following. Uh, the 18th priority is in our water wastewater divisions is sewer push camera. Um, again, we're proposing to take that out of utility funds, so not an impact to the overall, uh, general levy. And the 19th priority has to do with the water meters. Uh, this is how we program them. We have to put a longitude latitude in. Uh, sometimes we miss key that or miss enter it. Um, that means then we have to go back into a business or into a home to reprogram that. Uh, just save staff time and, and having to disrupt a customer. The 20th priority is to reclassify the commander positions within the, the police department. And that would be an ongoing expense. Uh, the 21st priority is to add ClearGov. Uh, this is the budgeting software that we talked about that interacts with our financial software. It both allows, uh, I think some, uh, ease both from the finance department and department directors on how they input, do scenario planning on the budgeting, but then additionally allows us to have a public face on our budget itself. And the 22nd priority is the aquatic center feasibility study. Um, and that would be coming out of lost, that's a one-time expense. Now, I know there was some discussions, uh, with some of the, both the trail planning and the aquatic center. Um, you know, we'll have some discussions on how those prioritize, but we probably only do one study at a time. Um, and if the council makes, uh, makes these and approves these, uh, we'll just have to kind of schedule, probably do the aquatic center first. Probably get that kicked off shortly. Um, and then this fall, winter of 2023, 2024, uh, we would be in the, the trails planning itself. Um, so that is our, uh, recommended, um, decision packages that we're presenting now. Uh, there, there is a number of decision packages this year went back. There's been some years, it's been a few, there's been some years, there's been this many. So I felt comfortable from that perspective, but there are, uh, a number of other decision packages that we're not recommending. Certainly happy to go into those if there's any questions specifically on those. Um, the other component I would highlight during the discussion with the HR finance committee. Uh, as you know, we are, uh, recommending a 6% increase in our base budget. They had raised some concerns overall that with the compensation study that's underway right now. How does that play out when we receive it and we don't have any money budgeted for it? Uh, so what their suggestion was to set aside an additional 2% in a pool that could be used across the entire city organization. Um, and that, that in itself equates to about a 10% increase in the levy to do that. Um, I think it, it's, it's a prudent thing to do. We know we're going to be, uh, needing some funds to implement that. Um, so we've included that.
You said it's a prudent thing to do? I just couldn't hear what, uh, uh, it sounded like cruel thing.
Cruel. Yes, it's a cruel, we should not be paying our staff.
Right, but prudent, so prudent. No, okay, that makes sense. Sorry, I just didn't hear you sound. Thank you.
We're not cruel to our staff.
No, I know. And that's why I was like, I mean, of all people, you're the least cruel person I know.
Um, it's the prudent thing to do. And so, um, we're, we're, we're making that recommendation. So based on where we're at overall on the entire budget itself, with the decision packages that are being recommended, that does equate to a seven cent increase in the overall levy rate to do that. Um, certainly if there's decision packages, if that's too high of a number, um, there's different ways we can pare that back. Certainly you can see the, the levy impact on each of the decision packages. Um, but I, I do think overall with, with the overall inflationary costs that I pointed out in the beginning, I do think it's a, it's a prudent and reasonable, uh, increase. I wouldn't recommend it if it wasn't otherwise that. Are there any questions on the decision packages before I go back to the first memo?
So, um, Mike, the, um, the mass, streetscape master plan, 125,000, where's that being funded out of?
Local option sales tax.
Okay, cause I don't see it on the D.
I'm sorry. The street master plan is coming out of. Do we have, now I gotta check.
For 12?
Sometimes it's too many spreadsheets, Tom.
I've listed 75,000.
Yeah, and part of it's coming out of TIF and part of it's coming out of the streetscape master plan.
Okay.
Or part of it's coming out of lost, part of it's coming out of TIF. Because not all the streets are in a TIF district.
I think it might be just, it would, I, I'd love their chart on this page is, I like it a lot. But it might be helpful just to add what the funding source is and, and also.
I, I have that in another chart.
Right, right.
And, and it just, how big of a chart is it?
Yeah. And also maybe like, for instance, some of the, I mean, I like the, how it's non-operating general fund. But it's, some of them are going to be ongoing and some of them are sort of more one-time in each. And some of that's a little bit obvious, but like the, it's just.
It's in there.
Look at column three. If you look at the third column, we have that in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. Thank you.
Um, Mike, I have a quick question. So the streetscape master plan, I should scroll down to that. That is just a plan that is not include any additional plantings for the streets.
Correct.
And so the 13, under recommendation of unfunded decision packages, there's a item 24 trees, increase the general fund transfer $13,000. Was that for increasing our budget to buy, uh, for the tree giveaway to the, to the Johnson residence?
That and our just overall tree, tree budget.
Or overall, okay, cause I, I have had conversations with, uh, public works about, you know, all these street projects we have going in and we're not doing any tree planting with them. And I kind of got the idea, uh, Matt, that we were going to start including that. Is there any budgeting in this current, current budget for some of that or not? Just, it can be yes or no.
No, those would be as we design the projects, once we have a streetscape and we know what that plan is, we would just include that in our project cost. It wouldn't be a separate.
At that time. So you don't have a separate line for increasing plantings across the community. Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions on the decision packages? Otherwise, let's go back to the, um, other, uh, memo. So which takes us right to actually exhibit C. So you can see where we sit comparison wise, uh, with some of our other metro cities.
Oh, exhibit C. Is that what you said?
And this is very similar to, to what you received in the past. I know a couple of years ago, we did list out which cities have utility franchise fees. I don't think last year we did, uh, but we included that information in there also. Any questions on this information?
Mike, can you explain the, uh, I, I want to make sure I understand that franchise fee cable only indicates that we currently have on with MediaCom, I'm assuming?
We, we do, and all of that revenue goes to the library foundation board.
Okay. And, and that is, uh, do we know the percentage?
Do we know the percentage? Is Eric on the line? I don't know the percentage. We'll get it for you.
All right. The other question I have, just to make sure I'm interpreting this table right. If I were to look at a Clive, for instance, or even an Ankeny, where they're talking about a 5%, let's look at the Clive line item, 5% electric and 5% gas. That is, that is the percentage that they're charging, uh, on top of, uh, the, the, the build rate in lieu of local option sales tax. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, and Ankeny doesn't have that, so that's why, okay.
The more, uh, Windsor Heights and, um, Altoona are all charging, no one is just charging 1% like we're proposing. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, and Clive, according to this chart as well.
And Clive, yeah, I, I was just adding to what he mentioned.
So, so I, and I just want to make sure, so there is precedent in other communities to charge more than 1%.
Absolutely, yes.
Utility.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we had in previous conversations, some of these communities do have a, uh, financial purpose statement that was put in place when they adopted those.
Everyone has to have one.
That those revenues are directed toward specific.
Mm-hmm. I always, the one I know specifically is Ankeny's, which there says it's specifically public safety.
Okay.
I don't know what, um, and I could get them. I don't know what, uh, Clive, Altoona, Windsor Heights, I don't know what their revenue statement says, revenue purpose statement, but I can sure get them.
I, I, I would be curious to know kind of what a mission, what those mission statements may look like. I certainly want to know what the percentage is, uh, of our cable only.
1%.
1%?
We're working on what that dollar amount is.
Thanks very much.
And these are all current. These are the fiscal, the year everybody's in right now.
Correct. There's an actual website. Um, I got the link from, um, Tim Stiles. It has all the franchise fees in Iowa, so I could have looked up any city other than the ones.
But I wasn't just talking about the franchise fee, but I was talking about the tax.
Oh, these are their, their current tax rates for this fiscal year we're in, just like us. I looked up their actual budget certifications. I don't necessarily want to, um, take you totally off your game here, but, uh, Tom, you asked a question and I had, um, Sarah check for me before I put it up here on the screen. But I, I had already updated, um, my reconciliation for the hotel motel tax. That's all right, but, um, and I had done so for the, um, oh, what happened? Come on. Back there, I'm opening too many at once. Hit it. Okay. Now what? Done. Exit out. Not now. So Tom, for, uh, the balance in our hotel motel tax, um, at the end of fiscal year 22, we ended up with a balance of 105,144. Um, 21, 22, our ending balance was 145,144. And for, um, fiscal year, then FY23, um, projecting, again, we're, we're just guessing, I guess there. Um, uh, for revenues and expenditures, but we do it by the percentage. If we actually got that amount of revenue, um, we'd still be at 103,000. So those, um, rather minor increases for Greater Duane Partnership and, um, the chamber wouldn't really affect the budget too, too bad. This, I think, uh, this was, they wanted 10.
$4,500 changed them, right?
Oh, shoot. Anyway, um, so 4,502 for the chamber, so we're looking additional $6,500. Um, I think we'll be okay if you were, if you wanted to do that.
So we have an ending balance there of around 100,000.
Yeah, yes.
So, and you take 5,000 off of that, you have 95,000.
Yeah.
So, and we fund, um, 81,000 out of that for a trail.
To, to go to the general fund for the trails, um, operating trails.
So, and that's just, that's a policy.
That's just what you've done every year?
Right, but it's not like legally, we're free to spend that money. I guess part of my question is, is that would it make any sense for us to look at, um, the 13,000 for the trees to maybe fund some of that or fund that out of the hotel motel?
And lower the 81?
No, not a lower the 81.
And not lower the 81?
Yeah, I want to take it away from trails, but I'm just, I'm just, I think trees are something that's a priority, trying to figure out a way to do that. And so, um.
John, is that a, a written policy somewhere? All right, so yes.
On the trails?
Uh, right.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just a, uh, kind of unwritten policy that the city council adopted several years ago to make sure that we had funding set aside to maintain the trails. Because for many years, what we did was we built trails, but we didn't put any money aside to maintain them.
Right, and, and I certainly don't want to undercut that, yeah. But it, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that it, and part of it is, is that, you know, likely we should be getting more hotel motel tax in the short, I mean, we have hotels that are planned in the community. Um, and, um, and, and just, that, that's an alternative way to look at maybe funding that 13,000 for trees. And again, I'm not saying definitely do it tonight, but I'm just saying, let me throw that into some consideration. And if there's interest, um, if not, then, then ignore it. But that might be a way to, again, and diversify a little bit of that, how we're using a hotel motel tax. And certainly in a way, um, that is consistent with things that are important to our citizens.
And, and I, and it would, it would not hurt that balance and you're right. Um, hopefully we'll have this other additional hotel revenue coming in, um, that will help. Um, one thing, uh, I don't, uh, I apologized. Um, Mike and I have read this memo so many times, I don't know if it's in there or not, so I apologize if it is. But unless we have another budget work session, it's my goal or our. But unless we have another budget work session, it's my goal or our timetable is that at the next council meeting, the first meeting in February, you will set the date for the public hearing on the max tax levy asking, which will be the second meeting in February. Then at the first meeting in March, we set the regular public hearing. So I am hopeful that tonight we get direction on what that levy will be. If not, we're going to need another meeting of some sort so we know what that is, so that I can get that done by that first meeting in February. Just FYI.
Teresa, I didn't talk about this because I just took the dates from last year and melted them for this year, so.
And there, yeah, those are the, the dates in the calendar were those dates for the public hearings is just a matter of whether we get done or not, Mike, is what I'm saying. So tonight, whether we get done or not.
So we have about 15 minutes left. I guess what I would encourage council to do is to provide feedback to staff on how you're feeling about what's being proposed here. So that they have direction on whether or not we're in a good position to have it on our next city council meeting for the public hearing, or for them to come back and have some further discussion.
Mike and Teresa, my only question really has to do with clarification. As we heard your kind of initial salvo and it was at a higher number of cents for the tax levy, I know there were two slight tweaks in decision packages as to where they were going to be paid from. But ultimately, what you're proposing today is less than what it was. What else changed? Did I miss something here that was or wasn't?
It was really making those changes.
Just those two, I mean, I think there were two decision packages we now attribute to non-operating, and that was enough to do it.
Which ones were those?
The aquatic study.
No, because that one wasn't even in there.
The Masters Trails Plan originally, I had that out of the levy, and I think.
There was a, I think a.
I want to say it was the paramedic school.
I think you're right.
Was in the levy?
We had it in the levy originally.
And then you moved it to local option sales tax.
Yeah.
My only other thoughts real quickly, and then I'll be quiet. First of all, Tom, there's no better time than now to plant trees, quite frankly. So I really appreciate you asking or creatively looking for any way that we can find some funds to be able to do so. It looks like potentially using that hotel motel tax could be able to do so. And at the same point, still raise the support for the Chamber and for Des Moines Partnership. So I would be supportive of both of those endeavors. I even would consider if someone needed kind of an olive branch to get there, doesn't mean we have to plant olive trees. But the fact is that.
There's a list of approved trees.
I know, that's true, and olives. Councilmember Martin, I think you'd assure us that olives are not on that list and won't be anytime soon unless things warm up considerably. But my thought would be, even if we could get to a point of trying to get some monies out of there, even as a one-time, and then we can more concertively look at attributing something similar to what we're doing with trails. When we have excess, they can go to trails, it can go to those uniforms, but perhaps it's now a $10,000 or something like that toward those trees specifically.
$13,000.
Well, I know that was the ask. I'm trying to cushion that blow a little bit for those that may not be as, may not be bargaining. But the levy overall, I support it. I know what we're doing. You guys are incredibly conscientious of where we are and where we need to be. All of the staff members and department heads have done that thoughtfully, responsibly. I know this isn't where they want to be. They'd love to have more, to be able to hire more folks and do more things to serve our residents. And yet they have already started making those tough decisions. And so no one likes to talk about raising taxes. But in reality, we're investing in all the right things.
I just want to ask, in overall dollars from the 1068 to 1075, how many dollars are we talking about? It's my famous question. Hundreds of thousands? Millions?
16.5.
Are you talking about like on a per resident basis or like overall city budget?
You know, if we're going up seven cents, what does that seven cents equal?
With the overall city?
Yeah.
For additional revenue?
So each cent is approximately $16,535. So it'd be $115,745.
Yeah, I had $115,749. So, very darn close.
And I'm going to go back to what I said before. I can't believe we can't find $115,000 in savings to keep the levy the same. Just in these two worksheets, D1 and D2, to get the ending balance comparably from D1 to D2 for '23, '24, there's a $326,000 discrepancy between the two sheets. And if we're looking for $115,000, it seems to me it should be here.
Well, the discrepancy is one is showing the decision package and one is not. So that would be why there's the difference there. The other concern is, and the council can make the policy decision to spend down the local option sales tax quicker, but we have only placed the ongoing, we've placed the one-time expenses in local option sales tax. We've not placed any more ongoing expenses into local option sales tax. Once you spend that down, then it has to come over to the levy, or you have to cut that service.
It just, to me, it just seems, $115,000 in the grand scheme of things, just seems like such a small number. But that's just my opinion.
I was going to say, Mike, that the whole budget session this time has been very well organized. And little by little, that you gave us step-by-step process has been really helpful for us to understand how things are being spent and how things are. I'd like to say the same to all the whole staff here. Thank you for making this less stressful for us and making that really good decision.
Sorry, I can't hear anything.
I was saying, I was saying that thanks to all the staff members here for making this happen, the budget is less stressful this year and more step-by-step process. Appreciate that. And I really like what, how you've done this whole budget session.
Well, it's Teresa and staff. It's.
It's a combination of everybody, but thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. That's all I have.
You know, I know, I'm I feel like we're missing a couple of numbers that the mayor has always talked about.
Yeah, I was going to see if Councilmember Martin had anything to say. Have you shared your comments?
Yes.
A couple of numbers that I always ask for, and I asked Teresa earlier today to provide this information to us. What I focus on is less the property tax levy and an increase or decrease there. And more on what the natural growth in our community has been, based on what our increase in taxable valuation has been, and how that compares to any proposed increase in spending. I like to see those numbers fairly close together so that our spending isn't outpacing our natural growth in our community. Because if it does, then it has a greater impact on the taxpayers, you know, individually as they're paying their tax bills. So Teresa, can you, based on what's being proposed here, can you share those numbers with us?
Okay, so, so this number, this number includes the decision packages that are being recommended except for the decision package that would have you raise the levy. So it includes the decision packages that potentially the local option sales tax, or not, the franchise fee was going to pay for. If you remember the paragraph in Mike's memo said that to fund all the recommended decision packages.
What page are you on, Teresa?
The very front page of Exhibit D, his, Exhibit B, excuse me, his decision package memo. To fund all the recommended decision packages and to minimize any impact on the Johnston taxpayers, staff is proposing that the city implement a 1% utility franchise fee. Based on the city receiving this franchise fee and the decision packages he is recommending, the property tax levy would need to be 1068,548 in order to maintain our 25% budget reserve. That's like, that's like about a penny. I mean, we're at, we tell people we're at 1068 right now because we're at 1067, eight or nine or something like that. And this would be 1068.5. So depending on which way you lean when you're on a five, you know, it's either a penny or not a penny. But anyway, so the numbers I'm going to give you are those numbers.
First of all, give me the percentage increase in taxable valuation that we would have.
5.17. So I have the expenditure chart right here of that, of those expenditures, and the expenditures are going up 9.94% in the general fund based on the decision packages and the regular budget. And the revenues that are history with that 10.68%, this is, this is the history of the revenue. And so if you look at this total column, it's about the total revenue. Here is our taxable valuation growth. So if you look at history, there are times where we had pretty big taxable valuation growth and we didn't capture it all. There's other times we had taxable valuation that was, growth was lower than what we ended up collecting in revenue. Here is a 7.8, we got 4.6. Here was a 5.9, we got 5.3. Here we were at 9.77, 9.4. We were pretty close. 9.66, 9.64.
And what are the differences between the two columns?
Taxable valuation is this column S1. This, that's just a one number in it. So in fiscal year '21, our taxable valuation grew 5.41%. Our general fund revenue decreased 3.63%.
Because we had loss.
Yes.
That was the year loss kicked in, yeah.
So then we had 3.4, 3.2. Last year, we had 3.76% growth, and we only collected 1.61% growth in revenue. This year, we have a taxable valuation growth of 5.17. That valuation, or that same number gives us 5.75. Pretty darn close. So the revenue is at 5.75, the expenses are at 9. Honestly, that has a lot to do with wages that we talked about, that we knew we were going to have to be at 6 already. Has to do with inflation, has to do with the gasoline prices that we've had, the
What's the difference between the 9 and the 5?
Expenses and revenue.
Income and spending.
Well, that's what, well, we're spending a million dollars over reserve, so our expenses are more than our revenue.
Okay, so tell me again, what is the 5 on the other sheet?
And what's the 6.54 at the bottom there?
That's the average, average of our expense growth.
Go back to the other sheet.
This is your revenue sheet.
Okay, what is the 5.75? What is included in that?
Your general levy, your special revenue levy, your ag levy, and your debt service levy. Your, all of the tax revenue that we get.
Okay. These, this is the, this is the calculation that we look at every year, that we ask you to prepare. And you've done it in the same way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what I'm seeing, what you're presenting here, is that they're fairly close. And as long as they're fairly close, and there isn't any reason why they shouldn't be, then I'm comfortable with what we're proposing.
So, and that's the, that's the 6.8. If you did his increase request, it would look like this. It would be 6.41 to 5.17.
And that's what the seven cents levy change.
Okay.
So that's what's really being proposed.
Yeah, that's, that's really the number I was looking for.
And the
But that has, does that have salaries in it?
It does not. I mean, this has, I'm not sure what you're asking me. It has everything but that new money for salaries. So the new money for salaries makes it the 6.41.
Okay, but the 6.41 has the salaries?
Yes.
Okay. Plus all of the inflation pressures and everything else. I'm comfortable.
So this is the 10 cents, or the seven cents, excuse me?
I mean, we have an extraordinary year that we're dealing with here, with the need to increase salaries to make sure that we can recruit and retain the good employees that we have and the inflation pressures. So I'm comfortable with what we've got here.
Councilman Copas frowning at me.
No, no, I'm not. So I just want to make sure I understand. So I'm looking at the bottom of Exhibit Page B.
Excited.
And so the last.
Bottom of what, Tom?
The last paragraph, what you were reading there before. So the 1% franchise fee is implemented, and that gives you a property tax levy of the 1068. That's, that's, that's the one penny increase. But then, so the increase to get us from one cent to seven cents is because of the the idea, which as I understood, came from the Finance Committee, which was to create this pool of 2%. So, I mean, I mean, I think that's a smart, rational decision. I'm kind of looking to the members of the Finance Committee. I mean, if they believe that that's something that's important to do from a budgeting standpoint, I can live with the budget too. But I kind of need the people on the Finance Committee to say, yeah, we support that too. And Jim doesn't appear to support it at this point. So I'm kind of.
Well, that, that couldn't be right because Councilman Evans at the last financial meeting talked about how, well, I should let you speak, but about how the fire and police keep coming forward and saying they can't afford, they can't hire the people they need. That there isn't enough money in that pool.
I'm not hearing, he can speak for himself. I'm not.
That's right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm just, I, and I stayed in the finance meeting. I'm fine with the levy going up. I just, for me, it's just, I'm, it's such a small amount of money, $115,000. In the grand scheme of things, it just, it just, it could be a mathematical error or a typo somewhere. But I support raising the levy to seven cents. But God, it just drives me nuts.
Yeah, and I, and I think we, I mean, yeah, I don't think we disagree with, I just, I would just look.
That was, that's just my point.
Okay, yeah. I mean, the thing that makes me a little nervous is the, is your other chart that shows the 9% spending increase. Because I think that is, because this 6% pay raise is, we were negotiating a 6%, and then it's a 6%, and then it's a 6%. So when we look at that 6.14%, and say, well, it's kind of unique for this year. It's not just unique for this year. It's going, we're going to be with, we're going to have these challenges. I mean.
And we don't, we have, we're still in negotiation on other salaries.
Right, exactly. We don't even, right, and that's, so.
And I think, and I agree with you. And I know we have to wrap this up, and I will, will say this. You know, this was a tough year. I think it's going to be tougher for a few years. You know, we're looking at the rollback going from 56% to 49, 48 is the indication we're getting from LSA. That's going to be a big issue for next year.
Right, right, yeah.
And then we're looking at the legislature that is going to do property tax reform. So there's going to be some challenges ahead.
I know, I can quote from a former Department of Management Director who will say that if, you know, preparing your budget is easy, then you're not doing your job. All, you know, every budget that we have prepared is always a challenge for different reasons. But it should be. We should, we should struggle with the preparation of our budget.
Well, I certainly, I personally appreciate all the time you guys have taken this year to talk with us and be open and direct so that we were able to get to this point. So thank you. this point, so thank you to each of you.
I, I can, I can, are we done?
I was going to ask, is any, is everyone comfortable with the staff proceeding to put this on the agenda for the next City Council meeting for scheduling a public hearing?
Yes.
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 And as Cindy reminded me to tell you, we'll set that max, and you could always come down. Not that I want to change it, because that's a pain for me, but you are able to do so. So.
This sets the upper limit.
This sets the upper limit. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa.
Do I need to do anything up here, Cindy?
Okay, we will adjourn the City Council work session.